... get thing and I'll call this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greetings, everyone. I'm kinda wondering when winter's gonna arrive other than the cold, but they say maybe by Thursday we'll have something. Okay, first thing on the agenda, um, we're going to go to visitors. Um, uh, what we'll do is we'll mess with everybody's head and let's jump right down to eight. Uh, B, recommendation?
Sure.
Hey, let's get right to the money. And I'm gonna, you wanna do the talking or?
I can, I don't really have a lot to, uh, to say other than memo that, uh, that I shared with the city council. I met with Allison and Eileen after the last meeting. You know, obviously their request for funding, uh, I think it's absolutely fine for them to come and speak to the city council about funding, but as we all know from a budget standpoint, we aren't like, uh, other towns whereby we present a budget, uh, for town meetings. You know, our, our schedule of budget discussion occurs, uh, I mean, I present my budget at the end of May and then the city council conducts work sessions and ultimately adopts the ensuing, ensuing budget. So it's like I say, it's, you know, even, you know, it's fine that, you know, we held that discussion, but, uh, you know, one of the things is, is that the sprinkler project, you know, is problematic for them and either directly or indirectly is problematic for us. And so, you know, Mike and I had some, some conversations about this. Uh, you know, Mike met with, with Allison, uh, I couldn't, I couldn't make that meeting. I guess I could've made that meeting, but I didn't.
You're good for that.
Uh, easy Al, easy, okay Allison. I didn't make that meeting, uh, but I did wanna meet, you know, with Allison and Eileen to kinda go over things a little bit. So anyway, Mike and I have a recommendation. Uh, the original, uh, city share of this project was really only estimated at, at around $20,000. We really never knew what our share was. And in light of the, uh, the fire pump, uh, you know, that, that did add and I, uh, you know, Mike and I both feel that there is some logic here that, that, uh, that the fire pump should, should not be only their surprise. Uh, that surprise really should be shared by both of us. And so we're recommending that we increase, uh, that there be an increase in the city's share of this project from about $20,000 to $35,000.
And, and part of that additional information is that the building is ours. We are the landlord and that attic is not something that belongs to us, it belongs, it belongs to them, it belongs to us. So, and the reason that fire pump has to be added is to put the water in the attic when it needs to be. So, having said that, we feel that that's where we own that, uh, a majority of that portion, so.
Lowell made the motion.
Lowell made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
That's what I was gonna do. Open for discussion?
Thank you.
You got something on the chip of your tongue, I know you do, go for it.
Where does that, I'd be interested in, in Allison's perspective on where that, what that does the original request and if it modifies the original request or does this cover things?
It's a good question, Peter. Thank you for jumping ahead in the agenda, we wouldn't have to sit through the whole meeting. Finishing, having the funds to finish the sprinkler is fabulous. We have to do it, the fire marshal's on us to get it done now, so that's totally great. No, it does not solve our ongoing operational budget problem, it doesn't. It's, that part's done, that's a big worry we have, but we still have, just keep it going. Uh, so I've had some meetings with some board members, we haven't met the full board as we said, well, we'll bring them back to the board and see what they said. So I believe you'll be hearing from us again saying, how else can we partner? How else can we work with the city to help the Opera House keep going, keep doing the good work we're doing? So, this is a chunk, which is wonderful, and I think it improves the entire city as a whole to get it done, but there are other problems too.
And it resolves the sprinkler issue?
It does, so it can get done and off our table and we can move forward.
Randy?
That was the question, was that fifteen additional thousand dollars gonna take care of the problem?
To take care of the sprinkler problem, yes.
Ziggy, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm just trying to catch up on the history of this. When we, the sprinkler system, we weren't, we didn't have one, was it, why did we have to all of a sudden have a sprinkler system? What had to do with the seating up there?
Well, it's a matter of how you define the word "we."
Okay, well.
Uh, in, in October of, I believe either two, I think it was 2009, there was a change in the public building codes that when there was a, a facility holding a so-called nightclub event, which means, you know, alcohol, uh, dim lights, dancing, I'm gonna say maybe live, live music as well, that any facility having a so-called nightclub event, uh, was limited to 99 people unless they were, uh, unless they were covered by a sprinkler system. And so what that did was it actually put a stranglehold on the Opera House, you know, weddings, you know, uh, nightclub events, uh, they could not have over 99. Now, having said that, I will tell you that they've been operating under a waiver provision with the, uh, Department of Public Safety, you know, so that they have to have some fire guards, if you will, and, uh, up there, you know, when they have events, uh, for over 99. But that, that waiver, it has been long, uh, it's been longer than they would, they ever do. Uh, you know, the, the, the department has been very patient with, uh, the Opera House, uh, in that regard, but, you know, they, they just, that's not what they do is have a, a code and then allow you to work, operate under a waiver for an indefinite period of time, so they're, uh...
So this came about because of them more than 99 people?
Absolutely, right, absolutely. I mean, the facility from an occupancy standpoint, I believe Allison is maybe 300, maybe 350.
Yeah, just about 300, hold on, yeah, and we've had it before. And the change in law came after the Rhode Island nightclub fire.
Yeah, I had to do that to my building, but I had under, I made him go down, ninety, we were like a hundred and four, so we created a big closet, so we only could hold 95.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you very much, and I will stay for the whole meeting, it's good, it's good stuff.
We'll see if Shannon's gonna let us pull the comment, okay? Uh, warrants, any questions on the warrants?
Yes. Do you have a question? I'll let you go first.
Yes. Yeah, budget.
Oh, budget, okay.
Budget.
The dry cleaning, monthly dry cleaning, may have asked this before.
Please, please.
What page are you on?
First page.
Okay, my eye is a little slow here.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, Mel? Okay, hearing none. I ask for a motion for approval of the city council meeting, December 20th, 2011.
Make second motion.
Randy made a motion, second come from Lowell. Open, uh, for corrections, omissions, or errors? Hearing none, alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? And then we'll go right to budget report.
Lowell? Do you have a question on that?
I do.
I have a question.
All right.
Other sources, I noticed that the general miscellaneous is roughly fifty-seven hundred over budget.
Right.
I was just wondering where that was.
Sure, the, and obviously when we have a revenue line that's over budget, we love that, uh, to some degree. However, however, you know, revenue lines that go way over budget can also be the result of poor estimating and I don't think that's right either. But anyway, what, what the general miscellaneous line item is used for is when, when there's revenue that comes in the door that we don't have a typical spot for it in the budget, a predetermined spot. And I can tell you that the lion's share of the sixty-seven hundred dollars, Joan, Joan's the one that deposits the check, but we sold the police cruiser, right, and so there was, we, we bid those out, it was maybe three thousand or thirty-five hundred dollars. The, uh, public works crew, uh, has been returning scrap metal. Uh, that's something that we haven't done for a long time. Uh, Jim has been, you know, cleaning out scrap metal and scrap is high and so we, uh, we fill our scrap metal dumpster and sort it between, you know, copper and aluminum and twenty-two hundred dollars. So, that's just a couple of things, if we, you know, sell a lawnmower, if we sell something, so, uh, and I can't think Joan of anything else. I will, I will tell you that, let's say if, uh, if we have an insurance claim, you know, sometimes we handle those kinda like, you know, off budget, if you will, we'll have the insurance proceeds offset the bill and so it wouldn't, you wouldn't see it under a, under a general miscellaneous, but it's just typically some odd income that, uh, that rolls in that we typically don't, uh, don't forecast.
Any other questions on the budget? If not, uh, any committees report, uh, Lowell, anything happening with getting next year's fishing derby off the ground?
Not that I've heard of.
Okay. Joel, anything on recreation?
Something later.
Okay, sounds good. I see some emails flowing back and forth between you and Mel, so, uh, I don't know when you're gonna talk about that.
We have an agenda item here.
Okay. Yes, you do. Ziggy?
No, I haven't been to any ten meetings or anything in the other towns. I've got invited to go to one, but they canceled, so.
Randy, Randy?
Nothing to report, sir.
Well, how about any word on snow shoveling for seniors? The storm is coming Thursday and...
I haven't, I dropped the ball completely, I've been working out of town now, so things are a little different.
Well, if you can, get ahold of them and see if they can respond, 'cause, uh, we need a number.
The last storm, I just emailed them with the two people who called and I was going home and I seen them, about six of them, shoveling one of the people out, so they're responding to the email.
I'll have to call Ian McGee and see if he can... Put me in touch with who's in charge of that.
Uh, we're still under, uh, different leadership over there, uh, Jim?
Jim's not there any longer, I, I really don't know, uh, I am not aware of, uh, of another interim director. I, I have not, I've not heard anything, Mike.
Okay.
I'll, I'll follow up with, with him or Bob Sabachek. Bob Sabachek was the guy that was here with Tony, if you recall, back when there was a, kind of a flipover of their contract, so I'll, I'll find out what's going on, 'cause Jim, Jim, uh, has not been there for about a month, yeah.
Why, they got too cold up here?
I don't know, but, uh, yeah, well, I'll find out. Don't know who's, hopefully somebody's running the place, I, I don't know. Maybe Ian is.
Maybe. Uh, I guess Peter?
The, my inbox is full of emails with regard to energy.
Probably something not favorable.
There's, uh, there's enough, uh, information there that I think, uh, funny to get going in some direction on that.
Excellent. All right, um, then we're gonna go right to, uh, public comment. Shannon, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just wanted to keep you updated on our activities with the planning commission. Uh, we met again last night and are planning to meet again next Monday. Uh, we're in a final review of the new zoning and subdivision regulations. Uh, we're about halfway through, we're making good progress. We should have something deliverable to you or to everybody, uh, by the end of this month.
Thank you. We'll tell everybody that I really exaggerated, there's not a hundred and fifty-two pages, there's only a hundred and forty-eight. So that may save you, you know, maybe a few minutes. But as Shannon said, you know, we, uh, uh, it is, we, we do have, under the municipal planning grant that we have, the, the planning commission, you know, I suppose they could get away with, with not having an absolute finished product of theirs by January 30th and still receive the, the final check, uh, from the state. But that's, but we are not, that's not what we're targeting. Uh, as Shannon says, the, uh, the board hopes to finish up its review on Monday. I didn't, I didn't write you about this, Shannon, it's possible that you may have to have one more meeting uh, before, uh, before, uh, January 30th, but, uh, I'm very confident, uh, you know, over the last month, uh, there's been a lot of work done, uh, in bringing, uh, you know, bringing matters together, you know, one of the things that, that was in my court for quite a while, Regional Planning helped out with, and that's, uh, to maintain our flood, uh, insurance. Uh, for properties that are located in the flood hazard areas, the city's required to have a complying ordinance. And I've been working with Tim Bowden at Regional Planning to make sure that we have, uh, a complying ordinance. We got that the other night, the board will, uh, conduct its review of that on, on Monday, you know, along with others. So, you know, I, there, there was a time where I was, I was getting pretty concerned with this project. It's a major, major undertaking and, uh, the clock was ticking away. Unfortunately, every municipality got a two-month, uh, extension, uh, 'cause I don't, I don't know how we would've ever finished that by, uh, by December 31st. So, uh, it was nice that we, like others, got that extension and, uh, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna make it with, you know, a few days to spare.
Good deal, congratulations. Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, Lowell business. Addison County Regional Planning Commission, recruitment for Vergens delegate, nobody stepping forward yet?
You know, you know, and I, uh, you know, I haven't brought it up at a, at a planning commission meeting yet, uh, but, you know, we, we do need at least one or two representatives, as David knows, so, uh, uh, you know, we haven't been participating and, uh, with them and, and I can tell you, Mike, that, you know, for instance, um, the Vermont gas project, I mean, that's something that Regional Planning Commission deals with. Uh, you know, just as an example of, of a role that, uh, that Regional Planning plays, you know, their, you know, their stance, their participation, uh, in, in that project is important, uh, you know, so, uh, you know, it, it's funny, there's some towns that, you know, find people that are interested in, in, in regional planning and, you know, for whatever reason at Vergens, we've had difficult time finding, uh, folks, you know, interested in that and maybe, maybe it's because the people that, you know, like do, doing things like DR Vergens type stuff and, and, uh, you know, it is a, it is a very different role to, uh, to play. So, uh, you know, it would be great if, uh, you know, if someone, you know, out there, uh, you know, might express interest. Uh, and maybe it's about, you know, maybe people haven't stepped forward because they really don't know what the role is and, uh, you know, maybe Regional Planning has some kind of a, a document about, you know, what the role of a Regional Planning Commission member is and, and if we can get that out. We may have to put a, we may have to, you know, put an ad in the paper and, and...
We can do that.
Try to get, 'cause we, we, uh, because of our, it's based on population, you know, like at the, at the solid waste district, you know, Cheryl's our representative, she has two votes, right? At Regional Planning, their bylaws work differently, is based on our population, we're allowed two people, right? And they, they actually could cancel one another's vote out there. I don't think Cheryl can split her vote, I never could, uh, do that. But let us see if we can't find some additional information about what the duties and responsibilities of that and that might help someone, uh, become interested.
I'm glad you brought Cheryl's name up because I ran into a Fairsbridge resident who's on a board with her and spoke well over how she took a stance on a pay raise, uh, at the solid waste district and, uh, very good move on her part, thank you for her support in keeping wages down and addressing increase, pay increases, or not, however you look at it. Um, back to the public comment for just a minute, uh, just wanna congratulate Alex McGuire on, uh, a baby girl. I'm not aware of what they named the baby.
Tess.
Tess. Okay, it's official, we have it.
And Tess has already attended a public meeting. Uh, Tess came to the last, uh, DRB meeting, I think that is the youngest, uh, attendee that we've ever had. Be a tough record to break, I'm...
I bet you it will be.
And behaved fine, good. And, and the baby was pretty good too.
I was gonna say, didn't have to call the police for, uh, oh, good. Um, speaking of police, we're gonna jump right down to item number B, police station, uh, site alternatives. Um, I'll let you drive.
Yeah, I mean, you know, uh, I have not spent any time updating this memo other, other than maybe mentioning to the fact about, uh, about, uh, receiving a call from Tom Danaker about that particular site and, uh, you know, whether or not, uh, the Vergens building supply, uh, 'cause I think in my, in my regional memo, I, um, relative to the so-called Northern Gateway, I, uh, I didn't provide any specificity at all and I can provide a little bit more to you about, you know, maybe adding those two properties as being on the potential list. Uh, so, you know, uh, you know, to me, Mike, this is, this is not a project that I'm in, in some race to do. It's, it's a project that, you know, uh, it, it may have been in our municipal plan in, in 2005. It is clearly in our, in the municipal plan that, uh, that the city council approved in 2009. And I think at this point, you know, it's at the, it's at the, it's at the, uh, point of just looking at some alternatives and eliminating some and, uh, you know, trying to come up with, you know, where might be the, uh, the preferred site if we were to, uh, to indeed move forward with a project.
Okay, um, anybody have any comments on any of the sites that were presented?
Can I just maybe get a little bit more specific information? The, the Pamp Road, Vermont Industrial Parks?
Yeah.
Is that what is, sometimes did Carrera own that or is that another piece?
They, they do own that, they own a forty-five acre piece, as you're going down Pamp Road. Uh, actually, uh, the Phil O'Brien estate owns, uh, that building, there's a small building there which, which is actually a little chip, if you will, out of that forty-five acre, uh, forty-five acre parcel. So it's that entire field.
Okay.
You know, there, there was a time when, uh, it was planned to be divided into, you know, twenty or twenty-five thousand square foot industrial or commercial lots. Uh, there was a time when it was gonna be divided into two parcels, one for country-owned products and one for Nathaniel Electronics. Uh, and, you know, currently it just sits as, uh, you know, as a, uh, you know, undeveloped property, there's no...
This is across the rescue table.
And, but a little bit further to the west, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Across from trailer park, more.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Right on my house, my house.
So Vermont Industrial Parks isn't, uh, like, anything special as a commercial?
He said...
Yeah, Vermont Industrial Parks, which is an affiliate, uh, partnership of, uh, of JP Carrera and Sons.
Okay, that's all I knew, that's, that's fine, okay.
It's basically, all it is is fields, right now.
Okay, and McDonough Drive, the place is there, just as you get to, uh, Job Corps, the buildings on the left that are...
There's two, uh, there's two buildings on the left.
Fairbanks is the first one which is brick and the Arsenal is a stone wall.
Right, and the, uh, what it is, the state of Vermont owns about two-hundred-and-fifty acres. They lease sixty-six acres to, to the federal government for, for, to the United States Department of Labor. Those first two buildings, there actually was a bill last year whereby there was permission granted to subdivide those two, uh, buildings off, uh, for, uh, conveyance. Uh, there was a bill that was passed, so it's those two buildings and some amount of property, Peter, you know.
Okay.
I don't know that, we've never seen a subdivision application, but, you know, three acres or so.
And when you say significant renovation, sorry, when you say significant renovation project, I'm almost presuming you...
No boilers.
You, oh, you, you, you might be able to use the buildings with some renovation there or were you thinking bigger about getting rid of them and just...
You probably wouldn't be able to tear down the Arsenal, you might be able to tear down Fairbanks.
Okay, all right.
But if anybody, I have keys to the buildings and can get anybody in if they wanna go in and look at the buildings.
Really, okay.
Yep.
So now when you say conveyance, you mean they're willing to give this to us?
Uh, no, I didn't say that.
Well, you said conveyance, so maybe I'm only...
And what I'm saying is the way that, the way that, that, that the state of, state government works, you know, it's kinda like in Vergens, if the city of Vergens wants to sell something and the city council wants to sell real estate, it requires voter approval. In the case of state-owned property, it requires legislative approval and there was approval granted, I think it was in the last session, that gave General and Buildings and General Services the right to, uh, to subdivide those property and convey them. I believe that's the case, Mike. I don't think that they need to, I don't think that Gen, Buildings and General Services has to go back to the legislature to, uh...
Mr. has the, the right to select a price and sell it, sell it, once it's, it's conveyed to, to that.
Okay, and the cornfield property, that's behind the, the used car place there?
Yes, it kinda wraps around, it, it, uh, obviously is on the south side of the Velco. It's fourteen point four acres and it wraps around both Vergenz Auto, uh, what used to be Bog Dog and, uh, the debt for Chevrolet property.
Okay. And, um, the Stone Pressure property, it is, my understanding is that there's some wetland in there?
It would not surprise me at all.
Okay, um, so it would, that might be a, a significant problem because there isn't that much space there if you had to, if you couldn't use some of it?
Yeah, the property, the property has been surveyed, it's an eleven acre parcel.
Oh, okay.
It, uh, it was conveyed to the city of Vergens by vote of the, of the people back in the early eighties to, and it was deeded to the Vergens Pan Water District and there was a reservation included in the, in the deed whereby, in, in essence, it can only, the Water District can only use it for the purposes of delivering water. That's the deed, so it's kind of a conditional deed. And if in fact, let's say that for whatever reason the Water District decided to put a new tower, uh, on Buck Mountain, I don't know, some other, some higher place, let's say, join forces with Tri-Town Water and no longer have, use that property for the purposes of furnishing water to the district, the property reverts to the city.
Okay.
All right, now, you know, why did the city convey all of eleven acres to them? I don't know, you know, I, I, you know, obviously they built that facility, they needed to own it because of their financing and, you know, federal participation, but it, there are, obviously, they don't use all of eleven acres and you're right, Peter, you know, when I drive by, I'm not a wetland specialist, but, you know, you know, when I look at a piece of, I can look pretty quickly and see that a piece of property might have some wetlands and this one certainly does.
Yeah, and I, I talked to Jim, uh, because I had a bucks on his property and he said that he'd gotten some information when he was trying to build, yeah, too, so.
Yeah, I don't know how much is used, I don't know how much is used.
All right, thank you, that gives me...
It may, it may actually have some fatal flaws.
Yeah, okay, fine.
Okay, thanks. So how would you like us to convey a selection to you, you know, our priorities?
Uh, you know, I'm, how you wanna convey that?
I mean, you wanna do it by email, you want each one of us to say, hey, here's my first choice, here's my second choice? What's, what's the best way, you wanna take and speak it out?
You know what I would, I'd be happy to do, not, not by email, Mike, but, you know, if, if, I think those are great questions, Peter. You know, and I think that that's, that's what other city council members, you know, and some have a full understanding of what these lots are. Maybe, maybe what we should do, Mike, is, is, uh, the idea of ranking, I think that's a very good idea. And maybe we should decide tonight that at the next meeting, the city council member's homework is to rank these sites. And, um...
One, two, five, or?
If there's eleven of them there, we can rank them all and, and ties are okay, you know.
So you're just talking about just the police station now, nothing else going with it? You wanted to rank this land for just that?
I, I think that, I think that ranking would be helpful, I, uh, I think it would, Mike. I, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, if people feel like they're putting themselves on the spot, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to get this off the top of my head.
Well, that's what I'd like.
I'd like to see them in the building.
Out of the ranking, I presume the next steps would be further exploration of the top, two or three and with all the, yeah, okay.
And I, and, you know, uh, I, I know that you don't have enough information, I absolutely know that. And to try to give you all of the information on all of these properties, you know, could be, you know, very costly and, and so I think that, let's, let's understand that, that we're just ranking, you know, we're not making a decision, we're just trying... We're just trying to focus in because, you know, all of these properties, regardless of which one, two, or three you choose, are gonna need further investigation. I, you know, but I, I think that it'd be prudent for us to, uh, try to at least narrow our, our focus. Cause if there, if there's some with fatal flaws, let's get them off the, get them off the list.
There's only six locations, right?
Nine. Well, we talked about, there's nine.
It's really two, you know, there's two in, um, there's two in the Northern Gateway. I can tell you that there's, there's also a couple of properties in the Central Business District. I don't think I have anything in here, uh, related to the Central Business District. But, you know, if, 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 if you're not talk, if you don't talk about, if you don't wanna talk about money, alright, and just say, we don't, this is just about where would we, where, where are the places that we would like to have a, a police station? You know, there's, there's more if you don't talk about money, okay? Uh, I mean, you could, you know, you could tear down all kinds of things, alright? But, uh, but I, that's not the way that I approached my, uh, this memo. It was about which properties, you know, are reasonably feasible. But there, there certainly are others, uh, that could be added to this list.
So do you want us to include what you have on six B here as two options too, or, or not?
Well, and that's where, well, my question is, what about other ideas that we have? Like, if there's a building on Main Street that I think would be an ideal place, it's not on your list. Okay, but that would be probably one of my first priorities.
What's that again, Mike? I'm sorry.
It might be a building right here on Main Street.
Yeah.
That I might see as a prime location.
Yeah.
That I'd rather have as a number one versus way off near Pan.
Right.
Not cause I don't wanna gar, guards, or, yeah, Ziggy, but.
Yeah, well, let me, let me, you know, let me tell you, let me tell you the two properties in the Central Business District that, that are potential sites. Uh, one of them is Ziggy, Ziggy Como's building. Uh, you know, she, she owns a commercial building. She owns a, uh, a undeveloped lot across the road. Uh, the superintendent's office, uh, here at forty-eight Green Street, you know, and he just sold for six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. It houses the, uh, the superintendent's office and a, and a lot of others. Would that be a good spot for a police station? The answer's yes. Alright, there's, there's two that can go on the list. I told you, if you don't wanna talk about money, you, you know, you know, the sky's the limit, but, you know, how, where the list is. But those two, those two sites could be, you know, could be added to the list. I could make this, you know, we could make this real, real complicated, like, for instance, in the Northern Gateway District. Yeah, you could, you could, you know, you could acquire, um, you know, three properties and tear them down, you know. I've, I've approached this not, not so much about acquiring a piece of property and tearing it down. But, you know, you know, this list could, could easily become longer.
So, well, I'm just trying to give some direction because if Lowell picks those two properties next door as priority one, and, and David does something off in another part of the city, and Peter goes off in another angle, we're never gonna come to a consensus.
I think we should just use the list that's on the, stick to the list that's in the back here.
Yeah, I mean, a question I have is, does George have any perspective on any of these properties? And the reason that I ask is this, I mean, not a cop, never been a cop, don't know anything about it. But it would occur to me that relative to the Stone Crusher property, if I was a cop, I wouldn't be too crazy about having that police station situated directly below the Stone Crusher, just from a safety perspective.
And, and really the location, that far out of town?
Driving up and down the hill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That far out of town, you know, response time, you know, where's most of your calls? Is it on that side of the river? So would it be better over across from Z?
I think if, it's, it's one of those things that from a ranking standpoint, you almost, you almost need to say, okay, what criteria are we looking at?
Sure.
And if you just, don't talk about money at all, just talk about location.
Yep.
If you, if, at the next meeting, if you were to come back to us with your ranking totally based on location, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, that's good. I think that's a good breakdown.
Clear enough.
Yep.
Okay.
Everybody's got homework. And then we'll get off of B and go to, uh, number C, two thousand and eleven financial audit.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Uh, this is the next one, right?
It is, yes, it is. Yeah, Peter, at the last meeting, obviously, I delivered the audit to, to everyone. I will tell you that I have not met with the, uh, with the local board, uh, the local board of auditors. I'll be doing that within the next, within the next couple of weeks. Um, and, uh, I, you know, I'm, I'm here, I'm, I'm happy to answer any question. Jones, Jones happy to answer any question, but, you know, one of the things that I did today is, uh, I reread the audit and, uh, and frankly, when I, the way that the process works, they come here, there's some preliminary work, and then they come here and they work for a couple of days, and then they produce a draft audit, Joan and I review it. You know, we, uh, we try to correct, uh, spelling errors and other errors and presentation type stuff. And then ultimately, we get, we get this audit report and an in, and an internal controls memo. And I've shared, shared both. I, I frankly, the internal controls memo, I, uh, it must be just an auditor's thing. At the end, they say, you know, this internal controls memo is for the sole readers of the, of the management and the city council. I frankly don't care, you know, there's, yeah, there may be some things in there that, that you're saying, what the hell's this, Mel? And I'm, I'm, I'm happy to explain it, you know, but you talk about transparency, you know, I wouldn't ever hide an internal controls. Then if Joan and I are, if Joan and I are doing something wrong, you know, then we fix it. I mean, it's not, it's not a, we don't, we don't take these things, uh, to, these things personally. So if you have any questions about something that came up in our internal controls, you know, by all means, we're, we're here to answer them. The one thing that I, uh, I, I fired an email off to Teresa today, Teresa Kojenski. She is the lead, um, accountant for, uh, for Father Gill. And Father Gill's been doing work for us, Joan, helped me out here ten, twelve years, you know, something like that. Uh, but anyway, when I.
Since oh-four.
When we turned, when we have the new, uh, financial, uh, financial system. So, when I read through the thing, I, I do take, you know, I do have fixed skin, but I do take offense to, sometimes to some of the letters that come into here and tell me that I'm not in compliance with GASB thirty-four, and we're not in compliance with GASB, you know, fifty-seven and whatever. And I'm thinking, I don't even know what the hell you're talking about. So anyway, I fired off an email to, uh, to Teresa today, uh, first it was about fixing some typos, Teresa. But then it says, on a related matter, the city council will be discussing the audit tonight. Because we don't follow the strict guidelines of GASB thirty-four, GASB thirty-seven, and GASB fifty-four, it is pretty critical. And I'm, I think that's the right word. It's pretty, pretty critical. Frankly, I wouldn't know what we need to do to comply anyway. Also, for decades, the audit reprimands us for treating the sewer fund as a special revenue fund rather than an enterprise fund. Same problem, I have no idea what we would need to do to comply. Is there a short answer to these questions? And Teresa writes back, uh, GASB thirty-four and thirty-seven, you would need to have a complete capital asset listing, among other items. The audit cost in the year of the conversion would also be costly. The most important process that you would have to do is to have a capital asset listing for the sewer fund. This really is not a short answer. GASB fifty-four would take time making sure all your special revenue funds and capital project funds are truly classified correctly and not really part of the general fund. Also, you would need a policy written and board approval. Sewer prize as an enterprise would also require a capital asset listing as well as some other information, alright? So, relative to the sewer fund, you know, I, and I, I have known, I do know something about, about GASB. It's not that I don't know anything about GASB, but it's, you know, in the case of the sewer fund, GASB, government accounting, such and such, whatever it stands for, I frankly don't even know who, I haven't Googled GASB. I don't know if it's the federal government that comes up with GASB or a bunch of CPAs that come up with GASB. I don't know. But I, I know that there's government accounting procedures. Relative to the sewer fund, yeah, we could do a complete inventory of the sewer fund. We spent three point seven million dollars in nineteen seventy-eight, and we spent seven million dollars in two thousand and whatever. And we could inventory all the, all the pumps, and we could figure out how many miles of pipe we got, and, and spend a bunch of time counting nuts and bolts and coming up with a list of inventory, alright? And of course, every piece, every asset, you know, would have a life. And if, and if you were in private business, you would depreciate that over three years, or five years, or twenty years, or whatever. And likewise, we're the real estate, and at the end of the day, uh, we gotta bill out sewer, and we gotta pay the bills. Okay, and the way that we have always approached the sewer fund is just that simple. We own a system, we have a debt, and we have two employees, we treat the waste, we have a permit. And we really run the sewer fund kind of like on a cash basis of accounting. We don't really care how much the sewer plant's worth. We don't really care what the depreciation value of the pump is at Otter Creek Park. We've just never cared. And, and, and if, if we wanted to follow government accounting standards, we could do it, you know? I mean, you could do it, but at the end of the day, what would it give you? And I could use the same argument for the general fund. We build sidewalks, we pave roads, we own buildings, we own fire trucks, we own police things. And we just don't keep a, an, uh, a, a, a list, if you will, of assets like, uh, private business, private businesses do, alright? Do we have every vehicle insured? Yes. Do we have every building insured? Yes. Do we have all of our contents insured? Yes. That's what we do. I don't, we just don't necessarily care about depreciation, depreciation. We buy something, we pay for it. We, we, we just expense everything that we buy, and yes, we have some debt. That is not following, uh, government accounting standards, you know? You know, I'll say I'm sorry, alright, but I'm just telling you, you know, I, I, it's, it's almost, you know, are there some municipalities out there that absolutely follow GASB? Yeah, I'm prob, sure there probably are, you know, I, I don't know.
I, I understand what you're saying. I agree with you. I just have a question. Is it, the fact that the accountant, the count, or the, um, the auditors give us those knocks, does that have any, like, deleterious effects on the city, our relationship with the banks, or anything like that?
I think our bond rating is, our bond, doesn't hurt our bond rating, I don't believe, but I, I know, if, if you're saying, like, if, let's say if we were going after bond. I mean, anytime that we do bond, we send our financial statements up there. I've never been scolded by anybody. I don't like it though, Joe, I hate it. It, it makes, it, it puts us in a negative light. Uh, uh, so I don't, I don't think it, I don't think it hurts us, uh, cause that's the only thing I can think of as to, uh, what it could possibly affect.
Mm-huh.
Would be a bond rating, then. It's kinda like using a, uh, a sledgehammer when you need a fly swatter. And, uh, I think if anything, based on the job that they're doing, the feds could probably take a lesson from us here. I thought it.
I appreciate you looking into, I appreciate the fact that you looked into it, and if it was an easy fix, you know, it should be fixed, but if it.
It's not, it's, to me, it sounds like a huge expense.
Pardon me?
Sounds like a huge expense.
Yeah.
If you're starting a business.
Right.
And set it up that way, and have a computer inventory list, it's not hard.
Right.
Cause you got a base to start with. To do it the other way, you're gonna miss some stuff.
Like you said, if it, it doesn't affect our bond rating or any of those issues, I.
I don't believe it does, Joe. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm happy to, to, to find out about that. I don't believe that it, that, that it does. Uh, you know, I mean, we've, we've, we've bonded for fire trucks and whatever, and, you know, Malcolm, whatever his name is, or Gothie or whatever his name is, I mean, nobody ever called me up and, and, gee, Malcolm, I, I don't know, you know. Who's ever done that? You know, they tell you what they look at. They look at your delinquent property tax list. That's what they, they wanna make sure that you're still generating money to pay the debt. I mean, that, and they wanna, they look at the ratio of debt to, uh, to, to your revenue stream. I mean, that's what they're looking at. I, I don't, I don't know that they care what the value of the public work garage is and that was built nineteen seventy-four.
Any?
I've got, yeah, I've got kind of two, two directions. That, what, what you said really helped because that, um, it, it makes sense of a lot of stuff that's in there, um, which I took as kind of auditing gobbledygook, if you will. Um, part of my, my, my first question is, it looks like the auditors are saying, we audited for X, Y, and Z, but our findings don't have anything to do with X, Y, and Z. Um, and I, I don't know if I can, if the language I could pull out.
Are you in the internal controls letter, or, or the cover letter?
Let me see. I think I actually was looking at the, yeah, the last, the last page twenty-nine in the book.
In the book.
In the book. Says, our consideration of internal control was for the limited purpose described in the first paragraph was not designed to identify deficiencies. Um, but then they go on to say, we did not identify any deficiencies. So, it's like, I don't, I don't know what this is saying in, in reality. What did they, what did they look for? And what did they find? It's not clear from the language, and it may just be because I don't understand the auditor's speech.
Now, in that, you wanna concentrate on that paragraph?
Sure, that one there, yeah.
Our consideration of internal control over financial reporting was for the limited purpose described in the first paragraph of this section. It was not designed to identify all deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting that might be deficiencies, significant deficiencies, or material weaknesses. We did not, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting that we consider to be material weaknesses as defined above. Yeah, I'd have to read that seven times to figure it out.
Sounds like a politician running for office.
But let me, let me tie, let me tell you, Peter, an example of, uh, uh, in, in the internal controls, uh, thing, dealing with bank reconciliations.
Yes, yep, I saw that.
Alright, uh, you know, obviously, we, we've, you've all read about embezzlements and, and, you know, how does embezzlement occur? Well, if you have one person collecting the money and one person spending the money, uh, and one person picking up the mail, and one person making the deposits. And so you, your entire financials operation, you know, uh, is done by one person. You have no internal control, or virtually no internal control. We actually have some, you know, a fair amount of, of internal control, alright? Relative to the paying of bills, alright? No bill gets paid without my signature. No bill gets paid without a city council warrant, alright? And, uh, Joan can't sign a check unless I've approved that bill. So there's a, there is a division of duties, duties there. An area where we, we, uh, relative to bank reconciliations, alright? Uh, Leslie does bank reconciliations with my oversight. Joan is involved. I mean, if, you know, if, if there's something that we, uh, um, you know, if there's a problem with a deposit, we obviously end up Joan. And we don't move forward without, without a bank reconciliation. I can tell you that, you know, when some earlier reports that they had, they wanted somebody outside of our office coming in to, to look at the bank reconciliations. And, and I'm thinking, and could you tell me what value that's gonna add to this? You know, somebody that has no idea what we do, looking at a bank statement. I, I, I'm not saying that it would be, you couldn't train somebody to do it, but, you know, basically, you know, I kinda sit back and, and Leslie pays the bill, Joan and Melissa collect the money, alright? I'm involved with bank reconciliation, so I kind of act as that outsider, but I'm not totally disconnected because I approve bills. I don't touch a hell of a lot of money, to be honest, honest with you. I, but, it's just, that's not what I, it's not what I do there. So we try to divide up duties. I will tell you, an auditor, what an auditor would like to have happen, Joan could vouch for this, is that you would send two people to the post office.
Yeah.
Pick up the mail, bring it back, one would open it, one would read it, the other one would record it, and somebody else would deposit it. And, you know, you know, you'd have three people, you know, handling a, uh, an eighty-seven dollar and fifty cent sewer check, you know? I mean, you know, it's, you know, that's auditors. It's CPAs.
Right, but, but the basic premise of separating the person who authorizes the che, the money, the person who writes the check, or signs the check, is it, or?
Yeah.
And the person who looks at it afterwards, the, the final statement.
Yeah.
What you've just said, the practice you've described, basically sets out those three as three separate entities in, in reality. Um, so, um, the. Um, so, um, the, the auditor of accounts, if you were to come down and look at that and say, that kinda would take care of any potential issues that he would see. Or, I mean, or like you've described, that sort of thing leads to problems.
I think in an organization our side, I'd say we're pretty good.
Okay.
Pretty good.
Alright, and I don't, I, I do have to say, you started out saying, you know, you don't take any of this personally. I want, I wanna make sure this stands, I don't want them asking the question.
We don't.
It's like, I read the free press too much.
Let me tell you, let me just tell you something, Peter. You know, when, when Joan and I pick up a newspaper and we read about embezzlement by a public, uh, official, it really irritates the hell out of us.
Yeah, yeah.
It really does.
Yeah, I, I can appreciate that very much. Okay, those are kind of my general discussions of audits, my general questions.
Any other questions, comments, uh, for Mel on the audit? He's gotta go back and approach the young lady about some more cleaning on the typos because this appears in the annual report. So, having said that, uh, we'll move on to the next item, city manager's report.
Yeah, I'm gonna just quickly burn through just a few things, uh, at the last meeting because, uh, we do turn in the pumpkins at five after nine, so I didn't report on it, not report anything. So I just wanna catch up on a few things. Uh, relative to street lighting, uh, you know, their Greenmount Power is behind in their work, uh, in getting our street lights turned over, converted to LEDs. And, uh, however, been working with Bruce Bush, you know, we're actually gonna start seeing some savings even though, even though the lights haven't changed and some of the lights haven't been removed. So, uh, some of the floodlights that were on our bill, that we have no idea where they are, are off our bill. Uh, so the next bill will not include any phantom light, lighting fixtures. Uh, the removals that we have directed them to do, uh, will be off from our bill, uh, effective next month. And, uh, they, you know, they know that our desire was to have all of the, uh, replacements done by December thirty-first. And, uh, they're, I, I think that Greenmount Power is just busy, and I think that they feel guilty about the fact that we, our taxpayers, aren't seeing that savings as quickly as we would. But, uh, uh, we're doing wha- whatever we can to start experiencing the, the savings because it was, it wasn't only a reduction in energy usage, it was a reduction in, in, uh, cost. Uh, next item is about tax sales. Uh, held one tax sale on December first, uh, for somebody who was, I think it was our highest delinquent sewer payer. Uh, had a public auction, the high bid was, the high bid was thirty thousand dollars. And, uh, within a couple of weeks, the bank redeemed that property and, uh, the person who bid the thirty thousand got paid their, uh, their bid back in a, in one percent, uh, interest, uh, on their investment, if you will. And then on December sixteenth, uh, held a tax sale, uh, on a property that had some delinquent sewers, but primarily, you know, two years' worth of delinquent taxes, and the high bid on that property was ten thousand dollars. Uh, all of the reports have been sent to them, and I'm sure that they will redeem this, um, two hundred thousand dollar property. So, uh, relative to delinquent taxes, I have only one account that owes taxes in two thousand and nine. And they owe about a hundred and twenty dollars, uh, so, uh, still on the list. I'd rather have zero, but we have one, and we have eleven properties. And don't forget, we send out nine hundred and twenty-seven or nine hundred and thirty-two bills. We only have eleven properties on our two thousand and ten delinquent list. So, we're in, uh, in pretty good shape. Uh, relative to sheer cuts, uh, I played banker here, felt like a banker at least. Uh, we had our closing with sheer cuts on December ninth. Uh, money was, uh, was dispersed at the last warrant. If you, there was a series of checks there that, uh, paid off, uh, Lake Sunapee, Lake Sunapee Bank and, um, credit card accounts, and that's all been taken care of. And they've already, uh, made their first monthly payment, uh, uh, on time, so that's good. The Riverwalk project, which obviously is the concrete stairway project behind Bill Benton's, um, I think I spoke to the board a number of months ago about the fact that they had sent us an agreement, um, which had a provision for additional dollars once the project had been bid out. And then they, this, the agency of transportation says, "You, you got the wrong agreement. Uh, you, you weren't supposed to have that fifteen percent clause." And, and I'm saying, "Well, you know, you know, it doesn't work that way." If you send an agreement and two parties sign, you know, and I sign a contract with somebody to do this project, you know, I, I don't think in private sector you can say, "Oh, you know what? We made a mistake on the contract. You really can't increase the thing." I told them, I said, "Listen, I'm not, this is not something I wanna make some huge battle about, but you know, you, you really can't change a contract once everybody's signed." Well, what they agreed to do was, uh, if I would sign the, the amended contract without the provision, they would work towards recapturing some two thousand and two money that the city, in essence, left on the table for an earlier phase and, uh, which was originally deemed to be ineligible. Uh, or actually, we didn't use it, and so it was like kind of a use it or lose it. And, and, but they never closed out a two thousand and two grant. And they've agreed to, uh, release about sixty thousand, the remaining sixty thousand dollars, which was actually more than the, the problem that I had. So, uh, that project, you know, there should be enough money between the grant, uh, both state and, uh, and federal dollars and the Greenmount Power co-op to, to finish this thing. So I, I thought we were gonna be in a, a little bit of a mess.
What happens with that sixty thousand dollars?
It's, it, it's used, it ends up being used for this project.
For this type of project.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I just wanted to let you know that we have not wrote a bill of sale for the boyer, you know, the, uh, the fire truck yet. And the reason is, is that there's been some insurance. Uh, it, it hasn't been easy for them to, uh, to acquire insurance upon, upon taking ownership. And I thought that maybe we could help, help out with them, uh, through the league. And, uh, we can't help out with them. Uh, we are, the league is not allowed to allow us to insure something that we don't own. It's just their, their rules. And, uh, regardless of whatever kind of lease arrangements you might be able to come up with. So, we haven't, we haven't transferred that. And it's very po- it's very possible that we may not transfer that, the ownership of that vehicle. I'm hoping that the Stevens Hose Company, I mean, if, if they wanna do it, to, you know, renovate that truck, I mean, I think that's fine, but I just wanted to let you know that we, uh, we haven't done that. Uh, the other thing I just wanted to mention was about meetings, Mike, and because I, um, the, the original, we actually have two problems. I haven't talked to you about the second one, Mike. But, uh, the first one is, is when I put the schedule together for the city council for January, was when we re, you know, I thought we would return to our normal schedule of the, uh, of the second and fourth. And what's, what happened, and I think Mike shared the email, is, is that if, if you meet on the twenty-fourth, it's too early to adopt the warning. And, uh, because people can file petitions for articles up until January twenty-sixth, I think the date is right, Joan. And so, we, we can't sign the warning. And so the, the plan is to not meet on, uh, on the twenty-fourth, but meet on the thirty-first to, uh, to sign the warning. Also, in February, uh, I have a conflict with, um, February fourteenth, and the plan was to hold only one meeting in February. I, I, I have no problem with having two meetings in February, depending on how much business we have, but I, I can't, I can't meet on the fourteenth. So, uh, so anyway, but, so when we, when we meet on the, on January thirty-first, we can decide what we're gonna do for,
It would kinda be nice if we moved it, if we're gonna have one meeting to, to the twenty-first, because then that gives a little bit of a rate between then and town meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, because otherwise, the meeting, last meeting in, in February would be the twenty-eighth.
Too late, yeah.
Which is late, and then we would meet the following, or the annual meeting would be the, the week after. So, that is, uh,
Twenty-first, let's find a date.
Okay.
So twenty-first, what for you?
Email to that.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's all I have, mate.
Okay, uh, we were talking electricity before, uh, just before the meeting started. Uh, and Mel was nice enough to print out a picture of the new addition over Northland Job Course. I just passed it around, copy of the, uh, picture of the wind turbine that's over there, and it's up and running. We won't get into major discussion on that, but now we'll go to, uh, new business. Uh, David? And the new business is, uh, conflict of interest policy. Uh, who wants to start?
Yeah, Mike, at the last meeting, the, the board requested that I, uh, provide the, the LCT model policy, and that was in your packets. Uh, you know, if, uh, you know, if, if the city council wants me to take that policy and, uh, you know, work on it for, for something specifically for the city council, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to do that.
What kind of changes do you perceive? I, I mean, I thought it seemed pretty comprehensive to me, but,
Yeah, the, the only, you know, uh, the, the only thought that I've given to this, Joe, is that I, the way that this model policy works is this policy is written like it affects all boards. And, I mean, the DRB already has a conflict of interest policy because it has to by law. The planning commission doesn't have to, but they have one. Uh, but what I would do is I would write it specifically for the city council. I, I, I mean, you know, in some towns, you know, and let, let's say that, I, I think that the board of listers, let's say, you know, I think it'd be fine for the board of listers to have a conflict of interest policy, and that board could have their own. I think the thought of each board having their own conflict of interest policy is preferable to me than, uh, than having a policy that are affecting other boards that are elected independently of, of this board here. So I would narrow this, is all that I would do.
Yeah, I think, apparently, it's, uh, personally, I think is a, a good idea. I don't know whether you could, whether you would want to put in a provision that says the following, other town, uh, city-related groups should adopt their own conflict of interest policy. So as the, as the governing board of the whole city were saying, "You all have to, we're doing it for ourselves." And we're saying, as a matter of policy, all the other groups that are part, that come under us have to also adopt their own, um, but it, but leaving it to them because the business is different in a lot of instances.
Right.
So are you saying fire department should have one, the public works department should have one? Or are you just talking more about boards?
Elected boards.
No, elected boards, uh, yeah, I was thinking more like the, the planning commission, the DRB. Um, you might wanna, I don't know whether you wanna include, like, the listers. I mean, any appointed groups would come under that, I don't know.
The elected officials would be, uh, um, grand jurors.
Auditors.
Auditors.
Grand juror is the one person that has no duties, so.
I guess, I guess I'll make a motion to ask Mel to, uh, write a conflict of interest policy specific to the city council.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Lowell, uh, open for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Mel, back to the drawing table.
Okay.
Sure, baby. Um, okay. We've taken care of number B, so we're gonna go to recommend article to increase the watershed recreation reserve fund.
The, uh, the recreation reserve fund obviously was established back in the, in the mid-nineties when the city sold the watershed property, uh, in Bristol, a few acres in, in New Haven. Sold it for three hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, the, the article was written in such a way that the proceeds of that sale would go into a recreation reserve fund. And the earnings there, there, thereon would be used for recreation purposes. Uh, I could, I could get to the actual language. Once that occurred, the city council adopt, has adopted, um, and amended a, uh, a, uh, policy whereby twenty-five percent of the earnings or growth are added to the original three hundred thousand dollars. And the other seventy-five percent, uh, there was a time when it was, you know, distributed to various organizations, but the current policy is, is where that seventy-five percent goes into a recreation facilities maintenance reserve fund. And it's, and it is, and it can only be used for that purpose. Uh, and that policy can change at, at any time, uh, uh, based on a city council, uh, vote. Well, all that I'm bringing up to you is, is that, is that the, uh, the so-called, uh, reserve fund with the twenty-five percent growth has grown to three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, that's a change. And if you want to truly protect, uh, if you want it to truly protect the three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, you need to go back to the voters and have the voters increase the level of that reserve fund. And, uh, that can, and that can, that reserve fund can only change with, with a vote of, of the citizens. Um, having said that, I can tell you that, uh, the recreation, um, committee, you know, they've been, you know, they're, they're, the new recreation committee has been totally focused on recreation facilities. I think that's fair to say, Joe, at, at this point. And, uh, uh, you know, I, I meet with them and, and the, the group has been very helpful relative to prioritizing, uh, projects. And, you know, we've done the tennis courts, and we recently have taken a, a closer look at the skating rink. And what has happened is, is that our, our needs are, um, you know, if we're gonna be using this fund and, and trying not to use either any or very much, uh, money out of the regular budget, the, uh, the needs, uh, are greater than the available, the available money in that, in that facilities maintenance reserve fund. And, and so like, for instance, the, uh, the, uh, skating rink area, multipurpose area, the, the committee would like to see that upgraded and upgraded to include some, you know, high-quality basketball court and other, other recreation facilities. Have it coated and have, uh, other games, if you will, uh, you know, painted on the surface and, and really just spruce, spruce it up. It's, uh, it's in a, it is in a state of disrepair. And like I say, to do that, you know, there really isn't enough money, and it would take another two years based on the balance in the recreation reserve fund to do that. So, you know, Joe and I haven't had, you know, haven't, you know, had real specific discussion. But, you know, you know, I, I think that if the city council wants to permanently increase that reserve to whatever number, above the three hundred thousand dollars, we should, you should include an article. And then any amount of money beyond that, that level, you know, could be used for, uh, for the same purpose. Uh, you know, recreation facilities, uh, re- uh, maintenance of recreation facilities. The number that I have in my head would, because I know that the, that the city council wanted to see that three hundred thousand dollars grow because, you know, you, you can't do the same, you know, with three hundred thousand dollars today that you could in, in nineteen ninety-six. You know, I think that if that, if the voters were asked to increase that reserve fund to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, the balance of funds, uh, which, which on June thirty was thirty thou- thirty-seven thousand dollars, would, would go a long ways towards, uh, enabling the recreation committee to, uh, uh, you know, you know, assist in the improvement of that facility.
Ready?
I'm gonna make a motion to have Mel draft an article to increase that fund from three hundred thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand. And so to use the purpose of the balance of the money to, uh, take care of some recreational needs in the community.
Do I have a second? Lowell, second. Open discussion, Ziggy?
So, if we wanna push it up to three hundred and fifty thousand, where are we getting that extra fifty thousand?
There's, there's three hundred and eighty-seven in it right now.
Oh, alright, I'm sorry, alright, three hundred. Alright, now I understand.
Peter, did you have something?
Yeah, just a question. What's the base amount?
Base is three hundred. That's what we sold the real estate for.
Okay, and so the voters said, "Keep that aside and use the proceeds."
Right.
Okay, and the proceeds have grown to eighty thousand dollars now.
Well, I mean,
And a lot has been spent.
Yes, exactly.
Alright. Okay. So if you increase it to three hundred and fifty, that's going to basically also increase the proceeds. If it stays at seventy-five percent, the proceeds would be higher, and there would be more money available on a regular basis.
Down the road.
For recreation.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
On a more permanent basis, because, you know, because right now, I mean, you know, you know, the, the city council has never invaded the money. The city council has absolutely stuck to the, the policy of putting twenty-five, putting twenty-five- twenty-five percent of the earnings in a growth fund, and seventy-five percent in, has been used, all right? And, you know, the, the city council actually has the right to allocate all eighty-seven thousand dollars, and because the, the voters only required that three hundred thousand be permanently, uh, kept in that reserve fund. You are, you have that, you have that right.
So, but if you build it in at three hundred and fifty thousand, and twenty-five percent now goes back into that?
Yep.
That will continue to grow beyond three hundred and fifty thousand, but can't be touched?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, you know, the, if, we can always revisit that policy, that policy as well.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah.
But it would, but it, in essence, what it would do, would, it would be kind of to reset the fund, if you will.
Yeah.
And then we would start over again.
Okay.
And what it would do is, is, um, release, in essence, that thirty-seven thousand dollars to do some recreation facilities improvements that are, are either gonna have to, either are not gonna get done, you know, or, uh, they're gonna be, um, or we would have to go to the, the ci, the, uh, the city budget to, uh, to, uh, fund that project.
Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
More work for you, Mel. I'm actually gonna delegate that right to Joan, she, she, she knew that was coming. Yeah, we'll, 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 uh, we'll work together on that.
Um, we're gonna go right to Joan, uh, recommendation of, um, no longer delivering annual report. Joan, you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, I will. Um, only because I'm watching other towns take the step now, uh, the law says right now that the annual reports need to be mailed or otherwise distributed to the voters. In the past, we have had, uh, we have hired someone, and they delivered them door to door to door and dropped them off at everyone's house, and then recently, like, probably the last two years, we've reverted to mailing them. But what's, why, why I think it would be good for Virgin's is because you go to the recycling center, the week after these things are out, and they're all down there. We spend thousands on these books, and a lot of people say, I don't read that, you know, and they don't. You find them in the snowbanks and everything else. It's, so, I, I, the law allows us to put this to the voters, to approve, um, that we will have this report available to the voters, and by what means we would be proposing, which means we will say, we will put an ad in the Addison Independent, letting you know what locations are available for pickup, and we will have them available on our website and areas where it is available rather than a delivery to their door, which will substantially cut down the amount of books we need to buy. And we still will have to buy some, because some people are gonna want them in a book form, and, um, by law, we have to send, like, to state departments and libraries and stuff like that, we have to send them. So, but I, I think it would cut our production right in half at a minimum and not have the waste that we have down at the recycling.
Ziggy, motion?
Yes, I make the motion to recommend the article to no longer deliver, deliver annual reports.
I will second.
Motion by Ziggy, seconded by Lowell, open for discussion?
I, I just wanna let you know, Mike, that, that this is, if this is, you know, obviously this year, uh, we will be doing the annual report, and they will be delivered.
We will have to mail, right.
This will affect, uh...
Next year.
This has to be by the voters.
'Cause our voters have to approve this first, which means our books this year will already be out.
And they may not.
Yeah, and they may not know.
So...
Yeah, well, we'll see if they read it, won't we?
Yeah.
This, this thing speaks to the auditor's report. Are you talking about the auditor's report, or you're talking about the annual meeting, the annual report?
Well, the auditor's report is what's in our annual report, and that's why we have to get it to the people, our audit.
Right, but are, are you not wanting to, I mean, there's a lot of other things in a town report?
Yeah.
In the city report.
Right.
But if you were to, if you were to, it's a good question, Peter, you know, if you're trying to say, okay, what do we, what do we have to do? All right, what, what do, let's, let's back up and say, okay, what are we required to do?
Yeah.
The statute that Joan is referring to is the audit.
Yeah.
There's another thing that we are required to do, and that is the, uh, it deals with our warning, all right?
Yeah.
And our warning, you know, we, the, the law actually gives us an option, all right? And we have the option of either delivering the warning by mailing it to everybody, or we can put it in the newspaper.
Okay.
And we've, you know, you know, Angela Lynn doesn't wanna hear me say this, but we, we actually deliver them early enough so that we don't have to put it in the, in the Addison Independent, all right? Now, I will tell you that if we, if we, if the voters approve that we no longer distribute the annual report and the warning is in there, we will end up having to, we will have to put the warning in the Addison Independent, and yes, there's some, there is some cost attached to that, so, but if you were to, if you were to just make, make a decision based on money, uh, you know, it's certainly cheaper to do that than that. And, and frankly, Joan, I, I can't think of anything else that we actually have to do, have to do.
Yeah.
I mean, the thing about, you know, my report and the planning commission, I haven't told you about this, Shannon, yet, but that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow's email. Uh, you know, all of these reports that we do, none of those are required by law to go in your annual report, we just choose to do, do so.
To make it, when we do our...
And, and again, as Joan says, this is not about no longer doing an annual report.
Yeah, we're still gonna do the report.
We will still compile that, that kind of information, because there are people that like it. It's just that they're, uh, getting it, the, the alternatives, many municipalities that Joan, uh, says, many of them, you know, people use the web, you know?
Right.
You just, you know, you just go there and read it anytime you want.
So, the plan would be, the plan would be, it would obviously be on the web?
Yep.
Okay?
And we would have it available at City Hall.
And you would have it available at City Hall, and somebody can call up and say...
Probably at the Bixby, you know, we'd have it available throughout town.
And the twenty or thirty people who want their own personal copy will call you, and they would mail it out.
Right, I would like, right, we would mail it.
And there'll be, obviously, a little learning, learning curve as to how many we need, you know?
The first year, yeah.
We're in the dark, you know, at, at first.
Well, we can ask other clerks, how much did it cut down?
The percentage is, right, right.
So, a number of communities have already done this?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I just think it's interesting, if I could editorialize a little bit, but, but kind of ironic that at our last meeting, we had this active conversation about the fact that voters aren't really educating themselves or about issues, and now we're saying that people are throwing away their, their reports before they ever actually read them.
Annual report, absolutely.
It's, it's not all just ours, it's all the annual reports.
All of them.
School districts, you name it.
It's really, really too bad.
Comes in and goes to the recycling, not, not to the...
It is, nobody reads.
Not to the, uh, reading shelf.
Yeah.
When I had my mailbox down at, by the trailer park, way too crazy. You'd go down through, and you'd see all the annual reports heaped up on top of the mailbox.
That's because they can't put them inside the mailbox.
Oh, no, you can't put it in.
Well, actually, we delivered them door to door, and maybe that's where they brought them, but, uh, yeah, it's, you know, they're, they, uh, there's, there's no question, there was a lot of them that, uh...
Oh, I mean, the school ones where they mailed.
Oh, the, the schools that did mail, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so... Okay, so, we're all set?
So, we'll ask the voters.
We'll ask the voters.
Do you need to vote on that?
Make a motion.
I did.
Ziggy made a motion, Lowell, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. All right, um, two thousand twelve certificate of highway mileage.
Yeah, Joan, I'm hoping you brought that.
I didn't. You didn't copy it for anyone?
I did copy it for everybody, but the original you had.
Oh, no, it's on my desk.
Okay.
You gotta sign it.
You know, is there a...
We'll make a motion that the mayor sign for us, can we do that? Instead of individuals signing it? If it's gonna, I mean, you got...
What's the deadline? Is what the cover letter say? Yeah, it's Sunday twenty.
May, February twenty.
February twenty? We'll have that for you on January thirty-fourth, we'll bring that date. Joan's got it, she has it.
It says they may not be processed if they're mailed after February twenty.
We're, we're good, we'll bring it, we're, we're sorry.
It's John, it's on Jones, it's up in Jones' file. We got it at a January meeting, so we're all set. We trans.
It is important, you know, it generates sixty thousand dollars, so we do want that signed and sent to, to the state.
Okay.
That sheet of paper, I forgot about that. Uh, I, I, my manager quit, I forgot I did that. You know, it was quite a while ago, I, I just talked a little, talked a little bit about, uh, about local app, about local option taxes, and, uh, about, obviously, Middlebury has a local option tax. And I actually was surprised at how few communities have a local option tax, and I, and I frankly just wanted to learn a little more about, uh, about communities that have opted to go this way, uh, 'cause, you know, many municipalities, you know, I can't really speak for them, but in some, in some ways, it's where a municipality is, has said, you know what, we have too high of a dependency on property taxes, and is there, is there a better or different, uh, way to, to collect our dollars? Uh, and so, I just wanted to share this with you, I worked with a guy by the name of Ken Jones in the tax department who supplied me with this information that I actually took and organized in my own, in my own way to, uh, to be able to read it. And, and the way that the local option tax works is that thirty percent of any room and meals or sales and use that's, uh, that's received goes to the pilot program, the payment in lieu of taxes. I, I for some reason thought that it went in the education fund, and that's not the case, it goes to fund pilot, uh, which is the payment in lieu of taxes of which we, you know, we receive money, uh, so in essence, that a portion of thirty kinda, you know, if, if the city of Virgin was to have, have a local option tax, that thirty percent that's, goes into the pilot program, we get a piece of that, uh, uh, in that, in that state distribution. Uh, again, you know, I don't, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm not working on budgets, I wanted to just share this with you. I could tell you, uh, that, you know, if you kinda think back a, a couple of years, you know, when I came back here in, in two thousand eight and we closed fiscal year two thousand nine, uh, I don't take any credit for the, for the weather, obviously, but, you know, we ended the year with a two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar surplus, you know, I mean, it was a huge surplus. And we were able to use, we used a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of that surplus and put it into our roads, uh, and kept the tax rate stable. And then this past year, we used a hundred and twenty, the balance, if you will, of that, uh, a hundred and, we ended the year, we thought we'd end the year with about a hundred and twenty-five, and we ended the year with a hundred and eighteen, and we used that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to keep the tax rate stable, all right? Now, obviously, we're having a nice winter, all right, and I don't know that that's, you know, automatically going to equate to two twenty-nine, but I just want everybody to be kind of thinking about the fact that, you know, yes, we've been able to keep our, our tax rate stable, and how have we done it? And we've done it by, by using that accumulated surplus, and that's, and that surplus is going to go away, it's going away. And so, when, when I'm faced with putting a budget together for you in, in May, uh, you know, it's, it's too early for me to predict anything, but I can tell you that I'm gonna have a real challenge on my hand, hands to deliver a budget to you that, that on, uh, does not have any, any, uh, increase in the tax rate. And when you're faced with that, there's really only two ways you can go, you either find areas in the budget to cut, or you find revenues to, uh, to pick up the slack. This, uh, a local option is one avenue, uh, is, and one alternative, and so, I'm, I'm not here, I'm not here proposing, proposing anything to you, I'm here just trying to offer up, uh, uh, something to look at.
Is there a way to, is there a way to get some estimating done on what, their possibility, not that I wanna go that way, but...
The answer's no. Uh, I actually posed that question to Ken to see if they could do it, and he, you know, there's got to be a way to do it, but there's, there's no easy way to do it, because they, they keep track of this specifically for these communities, they don't keep track of it, uh, for any other, you know, community, so they don't offer that. But I, I can tell you that I can look at these numbers and say, okay, you know, Middlebury has this, if you, if you look, and, you know, you can't compare us to Burlington, you can't compare us to Williston, but, you know, uh, I think you could do a comparison to, to Middlebury to give you some idea of what it might generate.
But if you were to, say, do a survey, send out to the business owners, and just say, you know, can you give us some rough estimates as to what you make in a year? Uh, and, and it, we would, it would, we're just basing some number on, basing some numbers to try to calculate?
The, the room and meals part is, is, actually, we could come up with, we could come up with a list of the Virgin's businesses that pay room and, room and meals. Uh, the thought of obtaining their, their annual sales, I, I don't know that we would...
Well, I, I, again, it's not, it would be an estimate, not exact, but again, for calculation.
I don't know, but I, but let me just tell you, so that, obviously, there, there is a, a list of restaurants, if you will, that pay room and meals, you could come up with that list, and you could, you could, you know, try to get information or, or try to estimate it yourself. The sales and use, I can tell you, is, is very difficult to track, and the reason is, is because it doesn't consist of, of twenty stores. Uh, if you think about the sales tax that you pay, you pay sales tax on your, on your internet and your Green Mountain power bill, and there's, you know, the, the sales and use tax is not about, you know, stuff that you walk into a store and buy, it's about all of the bills that you pay at home where there's this sales tax, uh, there, and I, and I think you'd find that that's, you know, I don't wanna say that's where the lion's share of the money is, but I think a lot of it is, is there, that's where the, that's where the purchases occur. So, uh, you know, and real rough, if, rough dollars, I mean, I end up looking at, looking at Middlebury, and you, you know, I, I know, I know what our, our grand list is, I know what Middlebury's grand list, I know what our population is, I know what their population is, so you, you could, you could try to, you know, extrapolate some number out of that. I don't know really enough about some of the other communities, so...
Didn't this kinda come up from one of the members of the partnership? I know that one person had approached and asked a similar question about, about doing this, and so...
They were talking about a special assessment district relative to property taxes to help fund infrastructure improvements, that's different.
Okay, any questions to Mel on that? If not, any other comments?
None of them.
Go ahead.
The last three or four months, me coming, I don't know if it's just me, coming into Virgin's, what was going on with these huge tractor trailer trucks coming down this road and trying to take this corner up here? Friday, I was just coming down, and he came up and tried to take the turn, and he couldn't make it. And he tried to back up, and there was three cars behind him, and one, somebody yelled at him, you can't go backwards. And then, thank God, the, the girl happened to be in the city bank, so she came out. He had to wait till she got into that car and to take off before you could actually... And when he took that corner, he still was almost, had to come back, and there was a car over in front further, he had to stop and then had to really rig it just to get past there. I have seen, I don't know, huge trucks coming around that corner in the last three or four months, but this one really was, and it, it was about five minutes before he could even get going till she came out of that bank, but they're coming up, right up this green street and taking this corner. I thought they had to be under the underpass and come in that way, or is there no rules anymore?
Well, they don't, they don't have to, they, the, you know, uh, the class one roads in Virgin's consist of Route twenty-two A and what some of us called Old Route Seven, which is obviously Green Street and New Haven Road, that's still, that is still a class one road, you know, that has the eighty or ninety thousand pounds, so they're, they're legal to do that, all right? And, and the only thing I can think of, um, is, uh, I can't imagine, and there's, if you're going north on, if you're going north on seven, are, are you saying they're turning left on twenty-two A?
All I see is coming up hit this road.
Yeah.
Okay, they're trying to make this corner here.
Yeah.
And, and probably about four of the eight times that I could see, they had trouble coming around, and somebody had to back up, in fact, I had to back up once, maybe a couple of months ago, and then when he come around the corner, and then I saw one time coming up the hill and taking the corner here, and that little car that was right there on the corner, he was just about this far from taking it along with it.
I can't, I, you know, I can't, I can't think of any, any, any reason why anybody would be heading north on seven so that they could go south on twenty-two A. I just throw that out.
I don't know where they're coming from, that's all I know.
I've seen, uh, traffic do the same, I've seen them in the intersection head south.
Yeah.
And the fifty-three foot boxes.
Yeah.
And it doesn't work.
You know, I, I mean, I, the only, the only thing that I can think of, I mean, is it, is it possible that a tractor trailer truck would go to Bubbs Barn, alright, and leave Bubbs Barn and then come up and wanna be heading south on twenty-two A?
Well, these are all, they're not all the same trucks.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I, I, I mean, if they don't know that, uh, underpass is sixteen and a half feet, you know, there would, there used to be a time when, when they had to go that way, but then, you know...
But I've noticed quite a few of them.
This is, I noticed, this is just recently.
Yeah, in the last three or four months.
More truck traffic by our house.
Well, if you can, you know, if you see it, Zig, if you can jot down the, the company, I mean, you know, I'm happy to get in touch with them or George, you know, I mean, I, you know, I don't know, I mean, I, I just wonder, I, I can't think of a good reason why they're doing it, you know, is there, are they confused?
Google, Google may have the wrong directions on the, um, underpass? Because that's...
Could.
That's a good point, because he was like this, the cab was like that.
Yeah.
And he didn't even, he couldn't even move it to even get it back and when he tried, there was a little car there and somebody said, you can't go backwards.
Yeah.
So, finally, whoever it was came out of Citizen Bank and got in the car and then when he did come, he was like this far from hitting the curb and coming back around and there was not a car in the next one, but the next one down and finally was able to get around.
Alright. Okay?
I'd have a door open if somebody coming along.
Yeah, I, I can't think of any reason why they're there, I really, I really can't.
So, it's not the only me that noticed them, huh?
Anything else from Mel or anyone on board?
If not, just a comment, uh, Judy had sent the council members an email out before Christmas asking, uh, their interest in writing articles for the upcoming City Voice, uh, as of when I left the house, still hadn't heard from anybody, uh, and she weirdly would like to hear a reply either in favor or not, just so that she can get going, cause the thing has to be on the streets by the middle of February and it's printing time. So, she would appreciate some input and yes, we would appreciate articles from each of the council members, your choice, just not self-serving.
Okay? To the point, blood. Um, okay, so our next meeting, October thirty-first?
January thirty-first.
Oh, I'm wishing my life away.
Maybe I'm thinking about warm weather, getting into warm weather.
Uh, yes, January thirty-first. Um, Lowell?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
And, uh, second?
I'll second.
Ziggy, seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried, we won't even ask if there's anybody...
And I'll give you back this book.